And welcome to day three, session two of the first annual neuro-oncology symposium organized by the Pakistan Society of Neuro-oncology. I am Aziz, I am your host for this session today. Honored to have Dr. Numan Mughal as the session chair. Well, is a PhD and an assistant professor in the Department of Surgery at the Ahhaan University. Now, before we start, if any of you have any questions for our speakers, you may ask on onlinequestions.org by entering the event number 13419. Our first speaker for today is Dr. Sayed Ather Inam. Dr. Inam is a US board certified neurosurgeon and is professor of neurosurgery and chair of the Department of Surgery at the Ahhaan University. He is currently a PhD supervisor for the Higher Education Commission of Pakistan as well. He is actively involved in many clinical and basic science research projects and has authored more than a hundred manuscripts and articles. Today, along with the rest of our panel, he will be speaking on the neuro-oncology in Pakistan. Over to you, Dr.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the introduction, Namra, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Mughal, and we have our distinguished panelists also on here and there are distinguished guests as well as everybody's distinguished, so I should, I cannot say they're distinguished and everybody's distinguished who are listening to this on talk. So this, we introduced this session because at no point in this whole symposium, I thought that I was able to really sell the right things about the global neuro-oncology. And it would, it would be difficult to squeeze this talk into anywhere else. And then this talk also required a discussion among us, those who are facing this problem, and that's why we have people from different companies and agencies joining us, because this is the problem that we are facing in Pakistan. And in this session, we don't have any foreign speakers. So, so let me share that screen and the talk was slightly just a second. So the talk was a slightly different, but then yesterday in the session, which was the inaugural session, I could not talk about things that we were, that I had in that talk. So what I did was I put together their slides in this, which are repetition of what we had. Dr. Numan, I think we lost Dr. Ather's presentation.
Yes, sorry for this. Do not worry, Dr. Ather will be back online.
Okay, my apologies. There has been some problem with the, everything was working fine and I decided to do my talk from here and suddenly in the last one hour, things start to go bad. So let me go back to here. Okay, are we, we can, we are seeing this thing, Dr. Rashad?
Yes, we're seeing this thing.
Okay. So, and I wanted to, to welcome all of you to the one I know, so I think it has been, you have been welcomed, a lot of the people who are attending the session already. But we are being endorsed by some of the organizations across the world, which includes the Society of Neuro-oncology, which is the biggest society and it's for North America. We have the European Association of Neuro-oncology and yesterday Chas Haynes gave a very good talk about the history of neuro-oncology societies. So ENO was the first one that was formed in the world. And then SNO was formed and then the World Foundation of Neuro-oncology Societies was formed about eight years ago to bring all the societies together so they can collaborate. And in this, during this period, the Asian Society of Neuro-oncology was formed as well as the Sub Saharan Society of Neuro-oncology. There's another society that I didn't have chance to connect to, which would have completed this whole major societies. That was the snow of Latin America. And then, and then I'm supported by our group over here, Neuroscience Interest Group and the Surgery Interest Group, which is a group of students, young people who are interested in surgery and in the neuroscience is. And the Society of Neurosurgery is also endorsing this thing. And this is a very special group over here, a special Brain Tumor Foundation of Pakistan. I don't know how many of you were there yesterday, but then Ms. Kumal Sayed gave a talk about her ordeal, her journey of taking care of her husband who passed away five years ago because of a glioblastoma. And out of that experience, she wanted to do something good. And that's where she formed this Brain Tumor Foundation of Pakistan, which is, in a way, there are a lot of parallel foundations like these in India also and in Canada and in USA. And what happens is that this group is actually involved in taking care of patients, patients' families from a different perspective. So the neuro-oncology societies, they are more academic and more research and research oriented without losing the main focus, which is the patient care. Whereas these societies also have the main focus as patients, but then from a different angle. So, so we will take care of patients. Okay, what is the right thing to do for them? What is the right treatment? How can we make sure that they are treated appropriately? And they look at a lot of other aspects that as a physician or as a surgeon, we don't have an access to. And we, we have been humbled, Pasno has been humbled by numerous top-notch neuro-oncologists from across the world. So the names that you see over here, basically we have the best ones across the world that have come in together. And they are all from about thirteen countries representing their neuro-oncology background. Okay, so so the reason, and I, and I talked about this in my talk yesterday also, but I'm going to repeat that, these two cases are still the most important cases for me that make me think about what are we doing and what we should do. So this is a sixty-three-year-old male with progressive decline in mental condition over several months. And he had, right, moderate, right, imiparisis. He arrived from a village in the north of Pakistan. He was accompanied by his son, who was himself in the mid-thirties. And he had a couple of children of his own. So when I saw this patient, the MRI, it looked pretty clear that this was a glioblastoma. The gentleman was not in a very bad condition. And if he was in North America, I would have, you know, easily, there was, there would have been no other thought about anything, but just take him to surgery. It's all, although it's on the left side, but debunk it, remove as much as you can, get a biopsy, put him on a track of chemotherapy and radiation therapy. That's the standard protocol and maybe is in his mid-sixties, so he may, he may fall into some kind of a experimental protocol also later on. But I was not in North America. I was in Pakistan. And the gentleman that was lying there was not someone who had a lot of insurance, a lot of money or insurance or a job. His son also did not seem to be of middle or upper middle or high socioeconomic class. So I talked to him and I said, look, we can do, remove this tumor as much as we can, we can get a biopsy. But then most probably you will end up doing, getting a chemotherapy and radiation therapy. And it's going to be a long process and there'll be a lot of things that you may have to do. You may not be able to stay in north of Pakistan because if you are going to go for radiation therapy, then you have to be in Lahore, Islamabad or Karachi or some other place. So there are a lot of things that you will have to consider right now. And then I asked him, by the way, what is your financial status? So he said, he was very, you know, it was his father who he realizes has a brain cancer. He said, you know, I will do whatever I can. I said, you know, what is your financial status? He said, well, I have a land that I used to till and make my earning, living from that. I will sell that land. Well, it's on that land, so obviously we will think about something. And I asked him, how much is that land worth? He said, I will send it for twelve lakh rupees. So that is way back then, which is, you know, two or three years ago when I asked him, but it was little more than that. I said, look, if we do surgery, we can try to get a very good welfare from AKU because we are very good in that, we have a robust system. But then after that, going through radiation therapy, staying in Karachi or somewhere or going through chemotherapy and all that thing. It will be very expensive, but and I think the twelve lakh rupees that you are talking about, for which you will sell your land, you will not be able to save anything. You may have to get some loan. And on average, doing everything for your father, we will give him an additional nine months. That is the data that has shown us. So he, so, so think about it, you know, and I don't know if, if that was the right thing to tell him. Should I have tried, you know, other sources to somehow we can fund this thing, but this is what I told him. And I'm not sure that I did the right thing. Anyway, so he thought about it and next day he told me that he wants to take his father home and give him comfort care. He understood the point that, you know, if he spends all the money over here, his children will be on the street, he will be under debt. You know, he will have no source of income. He was not an educated person himself. So that was one story that was not the only story. There are a lot of stories like this in different permutations and different ways. The other story was this gentleman, thirty-six-year-old. He had surgery for his low-grade glioma, which is over here. And this was done in October two thousand fifteen. He presented with she's and deficit because it's right context. The surgery went well, and this picture may not look very clear to some people, but it, it was a pretty good reception. And it was so good a reception that we decided that we will not do anything else. We will not do radiation for this person. We will not use chemotherapy. We will just observe this person. So we did some molecular analysis, 1P9Q was co-deleted. We did not have IDH, MGMT in those days. But this was a good prognosis, 1P9Q was deleted. You could have responded very well with chemotherapy if there was a recurrence. So with all the instructions, after seeing him in the, in the clinic, we asked him to come back and show us. But then he didn't, he never came back. Probably there was a problem with understanding, probably there was issue of travel, of distance, because he was again from very far off place from Karachi. And probably it was financial reasons. And he was doing fine. He had improved. He, the seizures were taken care of and his, his venous was gone. So it, to him, it seemed like, you know, I'm okay now. The tumor has been removed. And he went back to his normal life. But then when seizures struck him again after four years, that's when he came back to me. And by that time, the tumor had really grown much more. It was not unsavagable at that point either, but it, it had really gone much worse than this. And I don't have the picture of with contrast. Then it had changed. Again, my discussion with him was that, you know, we need to probably go back and debug the tumor and then we go for addition therapy and chemotherapy. But then he did not come back after visiting me in the clinic. I don't know what happened. Was it financial issues? He never discussed with me. I should have discussed with him at that time, the financial issues preemptively. He never discussed with me, never came back. So I don't know what happened to him. But then that's, that's another case that tells me that the distance, the financial issues, the lack of understanding and all that thing was the reason that this gentleman could have had few more years of productive life if he was being followed on a regular basis and if he, he was treated appropriately. So these were the cases that stuck to my mind as an example of a lot of cases. And it was around that time that because of Dr. Zulfikar Bhutan, all those people who have been focusing on the global health aspect that I, that I started to think about these things. He made me actually write this paper also and met need for surgeons, South Asia and British journal. So that's when I became more aware of these things. I, I realized this, that we have this issue. AKU is centered on providing this public health, but then writing this paper made me much more aware of these issues. And so if you look at it, the Pakistan is over here. It's number six over here, but I think this is two thousand seventeen, we might have already become number five more than Brazil. And India is probably going to become number one more than China. So we, we will be in top five. And now, but one has to realize that although the population of China is very big, China is a big population and although their GDP and GNP is very high. But the issue of this, what we call is a global neurosurgery, which is based on two main things. One is affordability and the other one is distance. So these are the two things that limits the access of appropriate care to a patient. So China may have better money, but the, the access to, for brain tumors, to neurosurgery is not good for everyone. There are two main centers. One is Beijing, one is in Shanghai, but there are people who have to travel long distance. And so the problem exists there. And then I have had seen patients in America. I remember when I was, before I moved to Pakistan, there was a patient who actually was, had his own little business, lawn mowing, you know, reasonable sort of low-middle-class or kind of person, young and is, is, I think, late twenties. He had a brain tumor. Now, he was not old enough to be, he, he, well, he didn't have a medical insurance. He didn't decide to have medications at that time because that was pretty expensive. He was not old enough to fall under Medicare and he was not poor enough to fall under Medicaid. And that man was going from pillar to post, trying to get a treatment for his brain tumor once he was diagnosed with a brain tumor. I remember that I could not help him and then I, I left that country. So I don't know what happened to him. He might have ended up in some PR, in a very bad shape and then surgery might have been done. So, so, so not, nobody, no country in the world is, doesn't have these problems. But then B in the low LMIC, we have this problem much, much more. If you look at this, this issue, there are about fifty percent of the world's population live on less than two and a half dollars a day. That's more than three billion people. And high dollar is nothing. But that's what they live on. And the, the other problem that I talked about the distance, if you look at it, this is a, this is a map that we prepared a while ago, that patients coming to AKU from different parts of the country and, you know, the patients have to come from long distances from you. And then, and then it's, AKU is not the only center. There are centers in Islamabad, that patients come from Afghanistan and all the thing. So this long traveling is a problem and low-income countries as well as middle-income countries, the distance to hospital is a major issue versus high-income countries. So that's, that's, that's problem number two. Now, besides these two main problems, the other problems that we have is the private versus the public sector. So we have this nice picture, this beautiful hospital, you know, it has JCI accredited, better quality than the standards, contability, multidisciplinary approach to patients, but it's beyond reach for most of the patients. Whereas if you go to public sector institution, we have, you know, it's more affordable, but then affordable what? There's issue of lack of hygiene, the wrong ways, minimal checks and balances. And but in some of these institutions, we have better funding for big-ticket items. So we will get some kind of robotic thing over there, but then, you know, the, the care of a common person is affected. And that is compounded by the financial issue. So although, although we as a nation, we are very good in providing support to our, those who cannot afford. There are examples of Indus Hospital. I mean, who does not know about that? Example for cancer patients, Shubhanam Hospital, even in AKU, this is two thousand seventeen, in last year, I think we crossed twenty-five million dollar donation that we gave in welfare. So it's a not-for-profit organization, AKU. Whatever extra money is made, we pump it back into the patient care. But then that's not enough because we are talking about such a big population. And the insurance in Pakistan is about, you know, two percent or so. And the money that's spent in the budget, in our health budget is minimal, it's a little sliver over there. And then look at the, look at the number of cost of craniotomy, which is about, you know, nowadays it's about five to six thousand dollars. Whereas the, the GNI per capita, I haven't updated that, but it's not too different from this. So if I, if I, if I am, if I'm a middle, average, median person, not I'm talking about low or poor, I'm a median, GNI per capita. If I'm a median, if I have to have a craniotomy, that is my whole year's earning goes away. That's it. So the, the projected data to twenty thirty shows that actually the expenses that people will end up in, in PEGMA, which will affect their pocket, is going to be the neoplasms, cancers, tumors. The other one mainly is the engine. That's the data that has come out of the studies on on the global, global surgery. And if you talk about cancer, Asia has the highest number of cancers. And if you talk about the doctors' ratio with the patients, so there are few that we really are, are the best, do at the top. So we have the highest ratio of patients to doctor, not doctor to patient, patients to doctor. So every oncologist in, in Pakistan is, is burdened by many, many more patients than what is a global median. LMIC, lower-income country versus global median versus high-income country. So that is another thing that really affects the providing compassionate, good care to the patients. And that is not all the problem. The other problem that I came across are the problem of lack of understanding of the right people for brain tumor. So here is a gentleman, oh, sorry, it's, it's a female who was being sent, somebody diagnosed this as a metastasis. She had a history of some kind of cancer. That was not very clear, long time ago. Somebody saw this, said, okay, look, it's like a metastasis, go and get a radio surgery for this thing. That's not the right way to do it. I just was looking at a case today. A patient with multiple spots in the brain, no biopsy has been done. And that patient is being referred for radiation and chemotherapy because the RIT report says it's a lymphoma. First of all, we don't have enough radiologists, good radiologists in the country. And even the best radiologist cannot confirm that what this is. The patient was being sent for, was, is being sent for radiation therapy. And then there was this patient, a two-year-old kid, again, it is an acquired cyst. It was sent, being sent for radio surgery from a different part of Pakistan. And so what it tells me is that the neurosurgeons, and this was referred by neurosurgeons, the neurosurgeons, they don't understand the pathology. They don't have, they don't understand the standardized treatment. This, this lesion, we need the total workup. And if needed, needs a biopsy, understand the pathology and then decide what needs to be done. And radio surgery is not the answer for that. If it's a metastasis, it requires radiation to whole brain and maybe boost over here. If it is, if it is some other disease, let's say if it's a primary brain tumor, then it needs radiation only over here. If it is something else, some other disease, then that needs treatment accordingly. This one over here is an acquired cyst. There's no need for radiation in it. You just need to penetrate that and take care of it. So those, those, so, so one is the problem of global neurosurgery, which is distance and financial. Number two is lack of understanding among the, among the specialists in the country, how to manage patients. Dr. Norin Mustak, she had been working on with oncologists and surgeons and traditional oncologists across the country and trying to standardize things also for pediatric neuro-oncology. As there's a lot of misunderstanding among, among the physicians and doctors and surgeons. So, 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 so that's, those are two main groups. And the third is, is, is that the, the, the things that we do, expensive things, they haven't really changed the outcome. You know, all the technology and everything. So, so what, what it brings to my mind is that what we have been doing is we have been just cutting and pasting the protocols from well, HMIC or some other place and then saying, okay, we're, we're going to push it over here. So we can't do that. We can't put a square peg in a round hole. We need to figure out things which are right for us. And that's where the ideas of trying to develop local guidelines, the and there are a lot of examples that how this has improved things over there. And that, that brings me to the idea of global neuro-oncology. The word global is somewhat misleading. It's not global. But it's basically global in a say, in a way, what we call is local. So it's locally global. So that's what we have to bring in circle, the whole problems and put it together and see how we can manage this. So for that reason, it was important to actually build a consortium and for consortium, it was important to build a society. So the Pakistan Society of Neuro-oncology was formed with that idea in mind. That we need to come together so we can standardize the care of patients, which is relevant to our local socioeconomic condition. The Pakistan Brain Tumor Consortium is the beginning of that. This is not the end of it. This is includes only centers which are doing surgery for brain tumors, but we need to include all the radiation centers as well. And a lot of other centers have to become part of this consortium. This is the website for the Pasno, www.pasno.org. We are adding things into it and keep trying to keep it up to date. What we need to understand that in Pakistan, we do not need to do cut and paste. We do not need to do expensive. We do not need to do expensive things. This is a picture of, uh, what we call as GLADAM Befor. It's a, it's a chemotherapeutic agent that, uh, has been shown to have an effect, beneficial effect. Initially, it was shown that if you put it in the cavity when you remove the brain tumor, after, uh, so patients have, once have a surgery, then they have to go through surgery again if there's a recurrence. And after recurrence, if you put it in, it improves the survival. And then again, it was shown that actually if you can put it, even if after first surgery, that improves survival. How much survival? About a month and a half, on average. What is the price of this thing? It was eleven thousand dollars. So I have done it only once in Pakistan and that was because this patient, uh, came from Saudi Arabia and she had insurance. So, you know, it was easy for it to be supported. So solar satra lakh rupay for one month, it does not make sense. But that is just the lower end of all these expensive medications. We are talking about medication which are going into half a million dollars. So some chemotherapeutic agents are so expensive that, uh, even the HMIC are really confused how to deal with that. Because evidence is coming up, yeah, it makes a, gives a little difference here, it gives a little difference here. None of them are making a major difference in the overall survival. Similarly, this thing, uh, five ALA, which is, uh, uh, which is a dye that you put in and it helps you reach to the corners of tumors and it apparently improves the resection. It has not been clearly shown if it really improves the survival overall or not. This thing, and I wanted to start over here, we had everything ready, but then the price suddenly went up. This thing is about for twelve hundred dollars. So, you know, if I'm going to spend, uh, about five thousand dollars for a craniotomy, I'm adding twenty percent just for this little, which is not, I'm not sure if it's really going to help. And then intraoperative MRI and then the expensive machine, we have some of these machines, which is important. But then we need to figure out doing things where we do not depend on high-end technology and we can cut the cost. So that's part of the, of this, of the, of, uh, global neuro-oncology, that's part of the past now. How to, uh, train people to manage patients with least amount of money? So here I have a picture of a brain tumor patient who had actually a tumor with, with expensive technology of DTI, this is MRI from, uh, my patient. Shows, you know, it's right into the, uh, into the, uh, internal capsule, giving him weakness. And it, 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 it was removed, uh, well, there was no residual, it was a high-grade glioma. And, uh, but then I realized that actually I did not need this image. The simple technique that I used at that point was, uh, awake craniotomy and looking at, at the internal capsule, uh, the fibers that connect the, uh, motor cortex to the spinal cord. And that was what I really required. I did not require this thing. And this can be done without a microscope and that is what, uh, without any technology and that is what Hughes, Ugui Defoe, not Hughes, Ugui Defoe from France was talking about, that you don't need all this technology. So this is something that we need to teach and train. I showed this picture yesterday. I was, Dr. Malik, one of my mentors, made sure that I, that I learned how to do a simple laminectomy by a drill, by this hand drill, because he said, you're going back to Pakistan, you have to know how to do this. Although there were very high sophisticated drill and everything that was available there. So that's what we need to teach. We need to train clinician researchers. We don't have, we, we don't have enough researchers, which is not, it's not a matter of, no, we, we have, we hardly have any clinician research in Pakistan. We need to train those people who, uh, who can actually look at the local, uh, situation and use their sophisticated, educated, uh, mind to, uh, to, to do research, to, and to improve the situation over here. Not just all of us just cutting and pasting whatever we read in papers from abroad. So an effort has been, uh, in an effort that we are trying to write a grant for NIH, trying to collaborate with the Hendryford Hospital, Hammond brain tumor center, Fredrickson Cancer Center, which is the main center and the hospital for sick children, uh, in Toronto. So, uh, and then, and then through that, we need to, uh, actually, um, uh, enhance the understanding of people and interdisciplinary, um, teamwork boards is one of the things. Doctor Noreen Mustak with Eric Buffet is already doing these things. But this is something that was standard, well, Hendryford was one of the first places, uh, that was doing a standardized way. Tom Mickelson was in a talk today and he conducted it excellently. And we, we really improved this brain tumor thing. It, it came up in a lot of other centers, but Hendryford was one of the best ones. Uh, this is done about thirty years ago. Telemedicine is another thing. Remember that second case that I mentioned to you, then come back. If I had a good telemedicine, we could have managed and, and communicated with him. Now with the COVID thing, telemedicine has improved a lot and it's all over the world actually. But this is something that we need to focus on. It's a technology, cheap technology that can have a long-lasting effect. And we need to look into that. And then using artificial intelligence and virtual biopsy. So those who are trained, uh, who have seen, I know thousands of these images can easily say that this is a GBM. Those who are, who have seen only a couple of them, they will not be sure. And there are a lot of people who have not seen enough and they will not, as, they will not understand what is this. They will call it a GBM. Uh, some of, uh, radiologists also, some of the neurosurgeons as well, some of the, more of the physicians. Some people may call this metastasis, some people may call this TB. Similarly, all these, but all these images have these little subtle things in here that can be picked up. We pick it up because we get trained by seeing thousands and thousands of these. Uh, but then if we train, uh, you know, uh, with the software, we provide machine learning and we can have an AI-based software, it can be much more reliable. And this has been shown several years ago by simple melanoma, uh, of the skin, uh, that was done in Stanford. I, I met that gentleman, pretty bright guy, he was working with, with my son when he started his high-tech company. So, so, so that thing can be, can be picked up. We don't have to depend on experience. It, it, we don't have to depend on, on my learning curve. From the day one, you can do this stuff. And then, uh, you know, Tom Mickelson talked about it today. There's something that we are working on. Dr. Norman, uh, has especially interest in. This is the liquid biopsy, getting the micro RNA. Because the brain tumor releases these micro RNAs and, and we can draw blood and see if the, uh, micro RNA can tell us about whether the tumor is this kind or that kind, whether it's recurring, whether it's, uh, getting better. And then putting it all together in radio genomics is what we, uh, are planning to do. Although this, uh, this grant that we submitted was not, um, approved, uh, to HEC. Probably they didn't understand, uh, the, the reviewers, uh, because again, I have, in Pakistan, I've come across, uh, some of the, uh, proposals are preposterous, uh, no science, no understanding. And, uh, those who are reviewing it have no understanding either. And, uh, and, and you know, these things get approved where the real science, uh, just stays in a corner. Uh, so that's a, that's a dilemma, that's a sad thing in Pakistan. So anyway, so, so, uh, this is a proposal that we are working on, thinking about. And then we need to, uh, develop a registry. We need to understand how bad is the problem of Pakistan. We need to have a molecular epidemiology. You know, we learned today also and we're talking about it, that all the brain tumors are not the same, same GBM, maybe different. The data we don't have for Pakistan, this is some data that was, uh, published, uh, a few years ago of all the world from sixty-eight registries. Even India has and China has them, but we don't have any data over here, uh, in Pakistan. And we can't just extrapolate, okay, so India has this thing, we probably have this thing too. Because if you look at this graph, which I showed yesterday also, we are so similar to India in our socioeconomic background and in our, uh, um, genetic background. But look at, look at where COVID has affected, uh, and you know, where India is going. You know, the COVID, where United States is, uh, we can understand the difference here and here. And maybe one and here, but what about India and Pakistan? And I don't think it's, it's doing Vazu and things like that, that would, that we have a better prognosis and COVID. So, so, uh, so this consortium that we built, we are collecting data from there. And these are the centers that have already started to contribute, uh, the information, those in red. And, uh, a few different things are coming up. The age is little different in Pakistan compared to, uh, general age. We have more male over here and that is because we ignore our females. I think that's the reason. It's not that, there is a difference in male and female ratio, but over here, I think it has to do with that. That would only come, come out once we look at the data and we gather prospective data over time. This is interesting, although the numbers is not very high out of Saudi Glou was. We have much lesser number of high-grade gliomas. We, so that means the gliomas that we have, they are more treatable. So we need to develop, focus on those gliomas. Uh, and then, uh, even if we, uh, look at GBM and some of the high-grade, still it does not, uh, make, uh, fifty percent. So this is something that is an opportunity for us. And this is a sad thing that, uh, this looks like a very bad data collection, but it is a sad thing if you collect data from a center where the patient had surgery, uh, about, you know, two-third of, uh, of those patients, we don't know what happened to them. Did they have radiation therapy? Did they have chemotherapy? And we are talking about high-grade gliomas here. We're talking about high-grade gliomas here. So, so, so that is, that is, that is, uh, another sad thing. And that is what the past now needs to focus on. This will be a biggest challenge actually. To change the setup, to change this whole, uh, thing in, in Pakistan. But then knowing, knowing all this information is very important. And I put Sansu's saying over here. This was about, I think, four hundred years before Christ in, in, in China. And, uh, uh, his, his saying about it, the art of war was written, written by him. And, and when he talks about the art of war, it's not only fighting and just going and killing and killing yourself. It was a lot of things, when to give in, when to step back, when to build, uh, a team, when to, uh, when, when to be diplomatic. And that's what is needed actually when treating with brain tumor. You can't just go on and, you know, take a talwar and okay, I'm gonna just cut it out. That doesn't work. You have to have an understanding of that and you have to deal with it on multiple angles. So, uh, so I'm sorry I went ahead, uh, but then we have enough time for discussion. And thank you very much for listening to me and understanding the basis of why we made this Pakistan Society of Neuro-oncology. And, uh, and Dr. Norman, uh, I think we will go to the discussion section now. And Dr. Shazar Shimmy, when Ms. Lali Khan is here also, and Dr. Jazib Khan is here as well. Did we, did we, uh, drop out some more people that were online, uh?
Yes, sir, we are connecting. We are on online as well.
So, uh, Norman, we can also do this if there are people who are among the listeners. Do you think, uh, uh, do you think, uh, we can bring them into the Zoom, uh? Sharif? It's up to you, how you want to do it. Let's go ahead and have a discussion.
Sharif can do that. Meanwhile, we can have a discussion. So we have Dr. Masood and, uh, Zishan from Farmivo. Uh, Dr. Janze from GSPAR. Uh, Dr. Permez from, from American.
Okay, awaaz, bohot saaf nahi aari hai, Dr. Norman, uh, uh, maybe it's.
There is some issue with the signal.
Paise bole? Mike ki pas. Yes.
Okay, so we have Dr. Masood and Rishan from Farmivo. Uh, Dr. Janze from GSPAR. Uh, Dr. Asher from.
Hello. Jee, we are listening. I think, I think, uh, Dr. Norman, internet ke chakkar ho raha hai. Acha, so, so, uh, Dr. Norman, we join.
So, uh, the idea of today's session was to bring together Pharma Industry and, uh, academia. So please, if you have any question.
So as I was mentioning earlier, uh, you know, uh, Masha Allah, you are coming from, uh, all these, uh, big successful companies. Uh, and at the end of the day, just like us, treating patients, aplogi patiently treat kar raha hai. All about treating patients from one way or the, one way or the other. And we need to learn from you that how, uh, what can you tell us about the perspectives of things where the cost is so high? And we have to cut down the cost. I'm sure you come across these problems. You have medications that can be very expensive, that can't be, uh, sold in the market. What, what things you do. So, uh, if, uh, one of you can start on this, possibly Dr. Jazib Khan, if you can, give your thoughts, advice that we can learn and use in past notes. And Dr. Shazad, anybody like just joining the discussion, which is, everybody knows Dr. Shazad, right? He's the, he's the, he's the brightest of all the neurosurgeons. So that's why I always, I always keep him along because when I fail, he picks things up and he moves things forward. Uh, and Dr. Altaf is over here also. He's doing his PhD in a, in a, in, in, uh, brain tumors, uh, and he is a neuro-oncology trained fellow, uh, and a neurosurgeon. Uh, and Dr. Norman Katar, who he gay. Jee, but I, Dr. Jazib, please.
Jee, sir, thank you very much for, uh, inviting me, uh, here today. Uh, the state of affairs that you have mentioned, Dr. Arthur, uh, it's pretty, uh, common, uh, across many therapy areas. You know, you have mentioned that there are less number of doctors, uh, doctors' patient ratio is pretty high skewed towards the patient, high patient, uh, numbers. Um, you, you have talked about the facilities, we do not have those facilities and you have talked about number of, uh, untrained or, uh, not, not well-trained, I should say, people who are able to, not able to diagnose few, fewer conditions because of their, their training. Uh, you have also talked about, um, a lack of information, uh, in terms of registries or, uh, some, uh, data that is actually missing. So you, you, you and your oncology team or your society is not fully aware of what, what's the landscape all about. It's a state of fear that is very common across many therapy areas. Obviously, uh, when we talk of, about oncology, um, the drugs, therapies, the treatment is very, very expensive. It's not only expensive here in Pakistan. I, I'm sure it's very expensive, uh, in, uh, other part of the world which are economically, uh, very, uh, stable and high-income groups. But the, uh, the issues remains on, uh, uh, the affordability and who pays for, for, for the treatment? It is, uh, through insurance or it's coming from, from the government itself or what are the, are the methods? You have very rightly, uh, uh, mentioned that, um, uh, the, the, uh, whenever you intervene in a therapy through an, through a therapy, well, what is the life expectancy? What is the survival with this intervention? But, uh, but here in Pakistan, I think one of the key elements should be also what is the quality of life of the patients? Mainly for the oncology patients as well. I have a very sad story to tell about, uh, the state of affair. I'll just do it in one minute. One of my very close friend, her, her mother was, uh, suffering from breast cancer and it was metastasized. And we were not able to find a pain-relieving drug for, for her. So we had to go to the street and buy morphine for, for, uh, for her mother. So that's the real state of, uh, affair that, 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 uh, we, uh, we have. But, uh, it's not, uh, it's, it's dark, but, uh, there is a definitely a bright light across, across the town. People like you and people and, and forums like these would, uh, would, would definitely would help in paving the path. People like you and people and, and forums like these would, would, would definitely would help in paving the path and moving forward. Academia, collaborating with academia, pharmaceuticals would love to do this. Me at, at Get Pharma and my, my team, we are already writing couple of registries where we ensure that the patients are also follow or followed up. One of the registry that we are running for about three years now is insustitute lung disease, a rare disease. And it's already, it is done through the collaboration with Pakistan chest society as well. So, you know, we make sure we put our resource and time and allocation of, of that time and resource. So we ensure that, you know, the registries and the valuable outcomes is al- already there with us. I think it's, it's a great platform where, and there is a need. But in neuro-oncology, I think, sir, we need to define the priority, our priorities. What could be our priorities here in, here in Pakistan? Is it the screening, is it the treatment, is it the survival of these patients or is it the training? Because there's so many things that need to be done. So we have to, I think we have to set the top three priorities for us, you know, for next maybe few years and then we can look into other priorities where we can work together with this society.
Great, thank you. I think that's, that's exactly. So there's a difference in how, you know, you in a corporate world think we have to set priorities, otherwise you will just be going in circles. So that's one message I got from you for past note is to set priorities. Jee, yes.
Continuity of Dr. Jazib Khan's advice and suggestions, I would like to elicit some points from Dr. Masood Javed. Because I was enlightened today by his team that they have worked on tumor, oh sorry, stroke registry. They have worked with the neurologist together on developing the stroke registry of Pakistan. So he, he may be a kind of a more enlightened person in this regard, how can we, we work with them in research and developing registries?
Maybe you have, what, what are your thoughts on to run that?
Yes, thank you. Thanks a lot for the invitation and it's wonderful to hear about the Pakistan Society of Neuro-oncology, what you are doing. And what are the challenges faced in the region and in the country as well about both, as well as the patient's perspective, the cost element, the training element, our physicians. And plus of course, we cannot do what is available at rest or thing and apply for our own patient and think the outcome will remain the same because everything is contextual. At every place, it's wonderful to hear about those things and keeping the same as Dr. Jazib has said as well. Challenges are many and as well as challenges, opportunities are also many. We need to select some of the areas and based on the vision and mission of Pakistan Society of Neuro-oncology that what are the key areas we want to go forward. Having said that, in those areas, what are the things which we required and request from the other organization or other institutions, both in academia as well as from the industry as well. Just as you has pointed out about the registries, yes, PharmaVivo is involved in, apart, involved in many academic elements and my main job is there as well as this. We have established many registries which include not only stroke but diabetes and cardiology and all other and they are supported from the scratch and sometimes it's required by the technical head, sometime the consultation is required, sometime as said by the patient's follow-up is an issue. And very important aspect that we need to develop local data, for local data, we need to have a studies with a follow-up. And it's sad to see that sixty to seventy percent of the patient right now with the registries are there are not having their follow-ups. So if you doesn't have a follow-up of any therapy, whether it's radiology or surgery as well, how can you make sure that which therapy is best suited for our patients and which to be applied? Yes, we are working in different registries as well and we can collaborate and develop. And the registries which we form will try to make sure they are on scientific ground, they are not only the data mining things, but you can extract interim data and it directly goes into the statistical softwares. So you can pretty much comprehend about these data when they are available. And as we said, yes, there are requirement of the patient's followers on all those things. When the industry is involved there, then we'll try to make sure that something a bit better can be done as well. Apart from the registries, we are in all over the country as well, we have worked in developing clinical research centers. Whether the, one of the CSR initiative is clinician which provide, it's a small kind of CRO you can say. And our team provides clinical research supports and establish them and recently we initiated another initiative which is a clinical research program. Apart from the institution, we are running with the ward setups and unit setup as well. Apart from other things, the telemedicine is also there, research support is also there, we provide. So you, it need to be clarified from the society that the requirement is something which is financial, which is technical, which is consultation, which is collaborative, which is resources all over the country. Because one good thing of the industry is when you collaborate something with the industry, you have much more human resource all, all over the country as compared to the institution which are at one place as well. But we are doing in many thing as well, so whatever things go forward and the technical things are required, we are pretty much here. And if there's any questions, I am here to respond to those as well.
That's a, that's a great point that what you said, that you have people, representatives, you have a much wider network and what I hear from you, from Dr. Jazib, from Masood Saab, is that probably registry is one of the priorities, right? What do you think? Is there anybody else who has thought of that one, Dr. Lali Khan? Ab kuchh kahna chaani hai, aapki mute bhi nahi hai. Ab mute bhi nahi hai. Lali Khan, ab mute hai.
Okay.
Ab bol jia. Ne phir, ab phir mute ho gayi. Ab phir mute ho gayi. Ab phir mute ho gayi hai.
Mute. Aap hi chik hai?
Jee.
Salam alaikum all of you and I apologize for being a little late in the meeting, but it was extremely informative. And since I'm not directly involved in all the academics of it, but my suggestion after hearing the whole thing would be that I think we need to be a little more focused on or at least start listing out, how do we want to approach the whole pathway as to what you suggested? Because is it just the academics of the whole thing? Or are we also taking into view the collaboration of the pharmaceutical companies wherever and when required, which is I think a very, very important aspect in the whole thing? Apne bahut achi baatein bataiye ki a lot of times, the procedures may not be as clear and one can easily follow procedures which are more affordable as per our country requirement or our patients requirement. I think we need to go into those details a little more. But I would really suggest, kya maine shah, shuru ka miss kya hai, toh I'm not sure of the intro. But Dr. Noman se main request karungi, ki thoda sa isko focus karke, ki hum log kaise leke chale? Kaha kaha jaye, ki areas bhi, kis aspect se hum is kam ko leke chale? Ek to yeh baat hai chhoti si, dusri baat yeh ki there are lot of these cancer centers now. I know of one Shokh Khanam, which is doing a lot of good work. You know, one can include them into something like this. Any help in that aspect, I could help coordinate with a few people that I know or baaki, I think we need to list out where is one required to start working on and take it step by step. Thoda sa yeh confusion, ab ho gaya hai ki hum actually karna kya chahe re hai? Thank you.
Can I add something, say something to that?
Yeah, please.
So, if I understand correctly, the key takeaway points from the from the comments I've heard so far is that firstly, that the industry is very forthcoming. Dr. Athar's proposals make a lot of sense to everybody. The industry is already involved in a lot of academic work across the country. There are certain advantages associated with involving industry that and there are certain limitations associated with academic centers like our university. And the way forward, according to our stakeholders is that we as pass no need to define our, our short term and long term goals. And, and based on that, define key areas where we can offer and exchange with the industry and those can be human resource related, those can be registry related, those can be financial or whatever. And then based on those goals and we can identify our respective strengths where we can help each other.
Sure, yes, that, that's what was the message coming out. Ms. Lali Khan, are you, I'm sorry, are you Dr. Nali Khan or Ms. Lali Khan?
I'm Dr. Laleroch ji, but I think that name has always been very difficult.
That, that's what I remembered. Because I, I think I met you once. So Dr. Laleroch, aapne aakhir badh boli ki, that made me little concerned, you said ki we are confused. So you, do you see that we are confused, we don't have our priorities? I mean, humne tabhi shuru gaya hai. But that has made me thinking, that was your one of your last comment.
Well, okay, not generally, but all I meant was ki, I think from the beginning, if you are little more focused. Kya hum log shuru, aap toh bahut saari chizo se karte hai, lek kya fir vo track se hat jaate hai. So, kya hum ek baat, do chize jo mujhe aapki samaj aai bahut clearly, vo ek yeh thi ki hum, aap, aap logon ka academia ka ya jo aap log nahi ways and means la raha hai aur sikha raha hai, pana raha hai aur kar raha hai, unka pharmaceutical companies ke saar ek lejyon kis tarik se ho sakta hai? Aur dusri baat yeh thi ki you introducing into our culture, our doctors, our specialists, the ways and means where they can perform, I'm sure they're doing a great job, but behta, aasan aur zara saste tariko pe kis tarik se a sakte hai? Toh, I think.
You, you, you put it together very well, you know, so I'm less confused now. I was thinking on the same line, but.
Until you were not confused at all.
Dr. Noman, ake chaliye, we, we have to have opinion from.
Can I make a comment, sir? I, I would like to say something, can I?
Jee, yeah, we, we have to hear Masab and Fazan and.
Yes, I, I wanted to get some discussion from Fazan, since he is from RyoGen and they supply different kind of molecular biology kits and machines. And since I have recently dabbed into this field of molecular biology and in forthcoming years, next decade, maximum two decades, cancer will be treated through these molecular techniques. And cancer means molecular biology. And unfortunately, in our part of the world, we lack significant resources to supply our research. So as, as a main company in the field of molecular biology, what do you think Fazan can be done by, by companies who are, who are widening the instruments, kit? So that they can support flourishing these basic science in the field of cancer?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Saab. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, so regarding the molecular, molecular biology is concerned, so we are, we are promoting the Kaagen molecular diagnostic products in Pakistan. And for that, we have a lot of different products for neuro-oncology which includes some of the micro RNA tests as well, like what, what Dr. Numan was trying to figure it out and what they are trying to extract out from different tumours. So we do have a lot of different micro RNAs arrays. So that can support in the field of diagnostics, like that can support in your diagnosis of cancers. So we do have IDH1 molecular base kits as well. We do have a lot of different softwares from Kaagen that can help in support of gathering of the data, data and that will ultimately help in your overall diagnostic you know, diagnostic facility. So, what we can do, we can we can discuss with our, with our principles as well and we can dig out more specialized products for neuro-oncology and we, we will try to have some good academia with you and we will, we will think and we will find out what, what else we can do in terms of providing the kits or best prices for you and some collaboration linkages with, with the Kaagen as well. So I think Umar, Umar Saab is, is our chief operating officer is also with us here. He can add more regarding the collaboration. So, Umar Saab, can you please add something?
Sure, please. Thank you. First of all, I would like to congratulate and make my apology because I had to attend a funeral which was after Zohar prayer, so I could not join the earlier session, my apologies for that. But whatever I have been able to join, it's a good effort, I think it's a good start and we are on the right, right path. I just would like to inform that we represent, we are a commercial partner of Kaagen in Pakistan, which is our world's one of the largest molecular diagnostic and lab science research company. And with the recently Kaagen with the help of Novartis has developed a signature diagnostic kit for the breast cancer which has been already associated with one, some of the hospitals in Pakistan already. I mean, some of the private labs in cooperation with Novartis Pharmaceutical have already started treatment and the testing on the basis of this test. So Kaagen is always willing and happy to work with these former companies to work along and to add with our, the motto of Kaagen is to make improvements in life possible. So we are here just to facilitate the logo and the mission of Kaagen, we are here to make improvements in life possible. And we extend our full cooperation and support to the, this community and this platform. And whatever which would be able to contribute, we would positively contribute to the development of the society. I, as I said, one of the speaker highly rightly pointed out that we need to lies down the, the next step forward, what would be our next step forward and these are different issues which can be divided to this sub of the committee members. And then on that way we can collaborate and we can further. So from our side, we extend our full cooperation and support and we will trust our principal to collaborate with some of the pharmaceutical companies globally. Well, if, if we are able to do this.
Thank you, Umar Saab. So I'm, I'm going back to what Dr. Laleroch said. Is that, so you know, here's a biotech company. What about developing things that actually is produced locally and has a market locally? So this kind of a collaboration, I, I, I was thinking about one of the scientists over here, Dr. Swaher Kurashi, who is now the vice chancellor at COSEX. You know, is a really true scientist. He was working on trying to develop tag polymerase locally. So I think, you know, Gets Pharma and other companies may not know what type polymerase, but then Kaagen know about that and tag polymerase, if you produce both of them, that can be so cheap instead of importing it from outside. So those are the things that we need to do over here. And that's where the biotech companies collaboration with academic centers which produces a win-win relationship that, you know, we provide, we provide the research platform that helps your commercial endeavor and the commercial endeavor supports the research platform. This is the, the most successful model that has proved, you know, I don't see reason that it cannot take this LMIC. We, we, you basically get the benefit out of that, we get the academic benefit out of that, you get the commercial benefits out of that. And that collaboration is, I think, one of the most important things, that, that drives Harvard, that drives Johns Hopkins, that drives Oxford, you know. So what do you think about that, Umar Saab, about doing those kind of things with the biotech?
Well.
I mean, sell this, sell this stuff that is imported from China or import from some other place and you can have a very elaborate agency, but then I'm talking about actually building up this, sorry, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, that well, what you are thinking is at this stage, I think it's an, I think we can talk about a few years later. But currently, what we witnessed recently with this COVID pandemic, and one of the the National University NUSK has tried to collaborate with develop its own COVID testing PCR kit. And then they contacted us for the marketing of that kit and we were involved in that things. But unfortunately, the product could not kick off. But again, on the same end, they were, what what they were doing on the backend, they were importing the enzymes from the China and this the master mixes were mixing up. And it's just like an assembling, it's not like the true manufacturing. What we need is a long-term research and then and then the trap allows some clinical trials for this type of PCR test. And then it's it's a limited entry, limited use up to one like that. But to do do a live science research is a different, is a is a long-term journey, which I think is along the interest of the country, we should start working like that. Yeah, it's a long-term journey, but it recently did, it started with this COVID pandemic.
It's not, it's not a short-term gimmick. It's actually serious. Umar, you can comment on this. Say, come to my mic.
He was saying rightly. We need to work on molecules which are research here rather than assembling things. Because most of the time when it's coming, they are just, they're getting in from China or from other countries and then they're putting together. Real research is, like you rightly said, what Dr. Swahel Kurashima was doing was the right thing. He was not getting the right support from H C or from company. That's why he ended up stopping that.
Yeah, okay, so we still have to hear from Zishan Sahab and Praveet Sahab. I'm sorry, if you have a doctor's name, you can say it.
Colleague, sir, Praveet here. First of all, thank, thank you very much. Give me the opportunity and give me the opportunity to the part of this organization and this research and collaboration. Being a medical, I I had meeting with Dr. Numan as well. And being a medical device company, we are ready to support in a research or education activities. And Metronic is ready to support everywhere in any in the world. And we are very much happy to have a collaboration with Akan hospitals. As as everybody is saying that we have a clear path and a clear plan to how move forward for that short term and long term goal. So we are ready to collaborate whenever you feel, give us opportunity, we can can come sit together one to one. And we have a Zoom meeting and we can decide what road Metronics play for the betterment of the patients in Pakistan and in the world.
Dr. Numan, your voice is quite low.
Do you have any suggestions, advice, any word of wisdom? What you have learned in your in your workplace that we can learn from that and try to emulate that in past now?
Sir, thank you so much. Zishan Adil here. I also belong from Farmivo. Dr. Masood already clearly explained the things that we can collaborate within institution with respect to the research. And we are very much at the forefront. If you are willing to create any sort of registry or research, we will be with you with respect to technical support, with respect to any kind of support that foster the research activity in Pakistan. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So so I'm so, I mean, here in the institutions, the academic institutions, they they should do research, which is in collaboration with the commercial entities. I mean, it can't be one-way love affair, right? It has to be give and take. So that is, that is an important aspect and that's what I think, that's the successful model that I've seen. Dr. Jahanzev says a lot of things, but Dr. Jahanzev, you have any comment? I think we should be wrapping it up soon, Dr. Jahanzev.
You rightly said that there is a, actually, you need a very fine balance between collaboration as well. It should not be seen as an a situation where it's a little overwhelming. And you know, because at the end, there is a risk of losing public trust as well. So I think there is a right balance between, I was just reading a few days ago, something, so it it talked about a Jewish wedding where they dance together, but they cannot touch. So this is where, you know, I think the level of collaboration.
I love that example.
That sounds like a Pakistani wedding too.
That sounds like a Pakistani wedding too, that is true. But except that we don't dance.
Yeah, we don't dance. So that's.
But I will, I will quote that, Dr. Jahanzev, that is an example, I will quote that.
Right, so you need to have a very fine balance between, because at the end pharmaceuticals is about, you know, commercial business and other things. And image where societies are about, academia is about research. So you need to have a very fine balance between and meanwhile, you not be seen as, a society should not be really seen as influenced by pharmaceuticals. So there there need to be a right balance.
True, true. I think that is a very excellent point by Dr. Jahanzev. That we have to strike a balance and not only in commercial sense, but in research also. We we as a university institutions, we need financial supports from different institutions, including pharmaceuticals. All over the world, research is a kind of foster child of pharmaceutical companies. But we we like this kind of relationship in our country. And with with this initiative of Professor Thareena, we can take our first step towards this this collaboration.
Dr. Numan, you have anything else to say or should we wrap it up now?
Sir, I think you should go ahead with your concluding remark.
It's not going to be my concluding remark. I mean, you know, you're the chair of the session, you do the concluding remark, don't put it on me.
Can I make one comment and then the Numan?
Well, then, okay, whoever makes the last comment makes the concluding remark. Dr. Shazad, you're on, buddy.
Okay. I would still like to know what's the next step?
Okay, so Dr. Lalaruk, so the next, so so the next step has already been taken. And that is, you know, working on epidemiology. But then I think what I need to do, this was just an introduction to you and all the people, there are a lot of listeners actually. Because I never had a chance to really talk about global neuro-oncology and past now. And I brought you in because these kind of, these kind of societies in the country can't work without support from academic institutions and commercial institutions. So that's why I brought you in here. So the next step is already taken, but then we need to come back together again and discuss more about. And I and I have gathered some excellent points from all of you. So maybe I'm not as smart as other people to exactly say these are the next steps. But I think the epidemiology is one of the things, we are doing some basic science research, that's another thing. So we need to, we will, we will, we will stay in in the conversation and I will need your words of wisdom. So this is not the end of it, as you said, yourself said, get people started and then stop and then, no, that's not the end of it. I I intend to run the past now until I die. So 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 you know, that's the goal and I think it needs to go. So I think the word of wisdom, last word is the word of wisdom from Dr. Shazad Shamin coming up now.
So to me, for a very long time, actually, I should say, for a lot of people, a lot of physicians across the country. Research collaboration with industry only meant asking them for food for their meetings or asking them for their travel arrangements to conferences or asking them for to support their conferences. For the first time, I'm hearing such encouraging comments from all the industry members and actually, actually some meaningful academic collaboration. So it's it's really heartening to see this happen. And I guess this was the phase of evolution, which was always going to happen, but it's it's really nice to see it happen and be a part of it. So thank you very much, Dr. Athel, and thank you very much, all the participants who came in and joined us together, joined us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lafe.
Lafe.
Bye bye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.